... phone and lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hilberg.
Here.
Colzar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here. Reading of the minutes?
Mr. Shields? I move at the minutes of the regular meeting of 7:25.
Second. Discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll and the approval of the minutes?
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees? The Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening, and again, we will not meet again until next year, in January. Doesn't sound a long time away. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colzar?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have a meeting scheduled at this time. There are a couple items on tonight's agenda, but nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no report tonight, but we are going to schedule a meeting at the beginning of the year in January. Thank you.
Water Utilities Committee, Mr. Hilberg?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report, but I believe after the first of the year there will be a meeting with the utility rate review, which will be followed up by a meeting with Water and Utilities.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a meeting last week to review the disaster recovery plan. It's been tested and works well. We're looking at a server refresh schedule, and we discussed cameras on the square.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance. We have seventeen two twenty-one budget amendments, seventeen two twenty-two, approve medical, mutual, dental, and life insurance benefits, seventeen two twenty-three, renew master services agreement with Port Authority for fiber services, seventeen two twenty-four, amend one thirty-three oh one association memberships for the law director, seventeen two twenty-five, water rates, seventeen two twenty-seven, agreement with Health Department testing stormwater runoff, seventeen two twenty-eight, bids for East Smith Road reconstruction, seventeen two twenty-nine, bids for Champion Creek multipurpose path and streetscape, seventeen two thirty, city contribution of Office of Older Adults, seventeen two thirty-one, fund advances, and seventeen two thirty-two rollover advances. For Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, we have one. We have seventeen two twenty-six, amending salaries and benefits code for the police department, remove a sergeant, and add a lieutenant. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just offer a few reflections on the past year, the first being the pool opening. Once a consensus and commitment from City Council was decided, the administration worked collaboratively with the community and the council. The pool opening went very well, and the pool itself was well attended by the community and has also recently led to the establishments, the establishment of a five oh one C three called Friends of Memorial Park to help with the ongoing capital needs and improvements of the park and the pool complex. We've had numerous industrial expansions this past year from new industrial companies and expansions of existing companies, as well as senior housing complexes to provide housing alternatives to our growing senior population. We've had many positive comments on the city processes and the helpfulness of staff in these projects. Our sidewalk expansion program was in its second year this year, and we completed the last of our industrial road replacements with the seven hundred block of West Smith, meaning that every industrial road has been replaced and rebuilt in our industrial sector. The bicentennial kickoff occurred at the Candlelight Walk to begin our year-long celebration of our two-hundred-year history, and we're blessed for all that has transpired in this past year. Speaking of the bicentennial events, because this is our last council meeting for this year, at Medina Library on Saturday, January thirteenth at one PM, they're going to have actors portraying the founders of the Medina Community. And on Sunday, January twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, from one to three PM, there will be tours of the county court buildings. I'd also like to take a moment and thank Councilman Hilberg for your years of service to the Medina Community and for your efforts and all you've done to make this community special, Brian.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Michelle Nichols and to receive a proclamation for the fifty-year anniversary of the Community Design Committee and any other members of the Community Design Committee that are here, welcome to come up if you'd like. This is a City of Medina proclamation that reads, "Whereas the Medina Community Design Committee was organized in nineteen sixty-seven by a small group of Medina residents who recognized that the beauty of our historic buildings had over the decades been compromised by neglect, unkind renovations, modernization, and drowned in wall-to-wall signage hiding the detail and original Victorian design. And whereas the members of the Community Design Committee worked with business and property owners on restoration projects of the buildings to return the center of the city to its original Victorian charm. And whereas the first building improved by the CDC was the engine house, painting the white, dirty facade red and working from there on building to building, eventually signs came down and period street lighting was preserved and the gazebo was built. And whereas the City of Medina thanks the Medina Community Design Committee for your efforts and commitment over the past fifty years to preserve the historic buildings, and now therefore I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby recognize the Community Design Committee and their fifty years of hard work and dedication to honor the vision of the city's Victorian forebears by restoring the city's center for all who call Medina home." And I present this to you, Michelle, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
We did accomplish a lot in the past with a small group, and as you can see, we're still a small group, but we work very hard. And now we're branching out into our neighborhoods and hoping to restore those and encourage people to come and live in those homes and make them great once again, just like our square.
Thank you all very much. I know the council is going to recognize here shortly Judge Dale Chase. Judge Chase and I spent many hours together and many hearings together back when I was on the other side of City Hall. And Judge, I wish you the very best and thank you for your service and for the way you led the court. You make the community very proud, Judge, and you've earned this retirement probably three times over, but we thank you for all you've done for our community. And last but not least, I would just like to wish the council, the members that are here, and everybody watching at home, a Merry Christmas and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple announcements. First thing is, for people at home, we are switching from CCA to RITA for collection of our income tax. That will be effective January first. If you are making payments or estimated payments, any other kind of payments on city taxes in December, please continue to make those to CCA. Those will be forwarded on to RITA. But until December thirty-first, we are still with CCA, so continue to make payments there as you have been. The budget and five-year plan are being passed at this meeting, and people working at home may see this and think that we only spend five minutes on the budget, but all I can tell you is that's not true at all. There's a lot of work that goes into getting to this point, and thank you for all of that. There's also some items on the agenda later that I'll address when we get to them. Finally, I want to echo what Mayor Hamel said to Councilman Hilberg, who will be leaving us after this meeting, and to Judge Chase, who will be retiring. It's been a pleasure to work with you both, and I want to say, one of my fondest memories in my time here at City Hall is, in two thousand and ten, my grandmother was still living. She was a hundred and one years old and came in and held the Bible while Judge Chase swore me in, and I will always cherish that.
Thank you. Mr. Hubert, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to join in extending my congratulations to Judge Chase and his retirement. I've been a practicing attorney in Judge Chase's court since the time he started as a judge for the first half as a defense attorney and the second half of his tenure as a prosecuting attorney. The volume of cases Judge Chase has presided on is beyond my ability to describe, thousands and thousands of cases every year. What I've seen on both sides of the aisle as a defense attorney and as a prosecuting attorney is a judge who has been thoughtful, kind, and good-hearted in the decisions that he has made for all of the people that I've seen as an attorney in his court. The attorneys sometimes write briefs and turn in arguments that are legal issues, and time and again, we've been benefited by a judge who goes beyond the legal arguments presented by the attorneys and does his own work, frequently finding solutions that are beyond what the attorneys presented. The fact that he's done this with so many cases in front of him has been a dismay to me, because again, he has been the presiding judge on thousands and thousands of cases, and this has taken an extraordinary amount of time and thought on his part to do that work. And it's not something that the general public would know about, but you would know about it as a practicing attorney in his court. It's been my privilege to serve under him, and I'm going to miss him.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. This weekend is our annual Shop With a Cop event. It starts off at eight o'clock in the morning. Here at City Hall, we will then travel to Blue Heron, where we'll have breakfast, and a short parade that will go through the City of Medina. We'll come across one sixty-two and straight up Court Street, all the way up to Walmart, and that is where we will shop with the children and then return back and enjoy lunch with the children. I just want to make you aware of the parade, the brief parade that will be going through the center of town up to Walmart. I too want to congratulate Judge Chase on his retirement on behalf of the Police Department. He's always been a gracious judge, even when at three in the morning I was sitting at his kitchen table. I can't count how many times I've been there for search warrants, and his wife Barb has always been gracious as well, getting woken up in the middle of the morning. On behalf of the Police Department, thank you for your service. We truly appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Mr. Hilberg for his service to the city, as well as his dedication to the ward he serves. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items to note for council and the public. This Friday, December fifteenth, the City of Medina, along with Main Street Medina and the Medina Chamber of Commerce, will officially welcome four new businesses into the city with their grand opening ribbon cuttings. We've got an interesting group of businesses this month. The first one is JT's Barbecue Restaurant at nine-thirty West Liberty Street. That's at ten AM. The second one is at eleven AM, a new retail shop in the historic district called Nibble at one oh two West Washington Street. That's the former Raspberry and Rose space. And then at three o'clock, we will head to North Court to the Medina Square DeVita dialysis, seven forty North Court Street. That's the former Mario Salon space. And then at four o'clock, we'll go over to Emmy's Taqueria, which is a new drive-through. It used to be Joey's Burgers at two forty-nine Lafayette Road. Invitations have been set, so hopefully all of you will be able to attend and sample the new tacos over there at Emmy's Taqueria. And I too would just like to thank Brian for his service in Ward One and to Judge Chase on his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to, as well, thank you, Brian Hilberg, for your service on City Council, Judge Chase, for your long service with the city as the municipal court judge, and also congratulations to Half a Century for the Community Design Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quick note, Rec Advisory Committee last meeting is next Thursday, December twenty-first at seven-thirty AM at the Rec Center. And then I did want to congratulate Judge Chase on his retirement. Congratulations. And Brian, I've known you a long time since we were kids. I'm going to miss you on council, so thank you for your service.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report. Did want to wish Judge Chase congratulations on your retirement, and Councilman Hilberg, it's been a pleasure working with you. It's been exciting. You've informed me of a lot that goes on in the community, and I really appreciate your input in those conversations that we've had, as well as your organization of the Ward One Block Party. It's been a success for a number of years, so we'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but I would like to thank, I'm going to miss Brian with all his help with the Building Department, and I want to congratulate Judge Chase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. An update on the West Smith Bridge. It looks like it'll be the first part of next week before that'll be open, but it is coming. It is a couple days beyond what we'd hoped, but it is coming. And also, like everyone else, I wanted to congratulate Judge Chase. Had opportunity to work with him, it's always a pleasure. And Brian, we do appreciate everything you did, and we will miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCully, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think everyone's covered everything, but we'll talk about the leaves and the snow. Actually, Judge Chase acknowledged you for your years of service here, thirty years to the community plus. I know I'm working with the community service folks that you sent over. The city's been served well, and you've had opportunity to change a lot of lives that you've touched, so make the community understands that. And Brian, Councilman Hilberg, got a lot to say to you. I'll wait till we're off mic, but good working with you, and we're going to miss you.
Thanks, Nino.
Thank you. Notice the communications petitions, we have one, and I would ask Judge Dale Chase to come up to the front. Is it on? Okay. It's on now, thank you. So I just want to give a little history about Judge Chase here. He was born in Medina. He graduated from Medina High School many years ago.
Before you did.
Before I did. He has a BA in International Studies from the American University and a law degree from the Catholic University of the American School of Law. He was in private practice from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-seven. Does that sound right? He was also a member of the Medina City School Board, maybe people didn't know that, from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-seven. He was also a member of the Medina County Career Center Board from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-seven. And finally, he was elected judge in nineteen eighty-eight until the present time, which is, I think, the longest-standing judge in Medina County.
That would be right.
That would be right, so that's a long time. But on behalf of council, we'd like to present you with this plaque of appreciation that just states that Dale A. Chase, Judge, Medina Municipal Court, from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand and seventeen, appreciation for your years of dedicated service to the City of Medina and the community, Medina City Council. Thank you. Any last words you want to do about retirement?
John said I've got no more than half an hour, so I'll try not to use it all. I appreciate the thought behind this recognition. I've been privileged to serve here as municipal court judge for thirty years. It's been a fascinating time. I think I might have signed my last search warrant last night at one-thirty in the morning. You can give an award to Matt Fitz for waking me up last night, okay? I have tried every day to try and do what I thought was best for our community over a long period of time. I started a policy in January one of nineteen eighty-eight of not permitting DUIs to be reduced to lesser charges, and I've managed to maintain that policy for thirty years. I believe it made our community safer over the long period of time, and I have tried every day with every person I have sentenced to know who they are and what their background is and what their life is and how they got to where they are in front of me, with the goal of trying to help make their lives, over time, just a little bit better. And I felt if I could help these people make their lives better, over time, it would make our community safer and would make their families better, make them better employees, better members of our community, better citizens of our society. And I've tried to do that every day. Sometimes I've been successful, sometimes I haven't. I did have a defendant last month tell me he was going to miss coming in to see me next year. Somehow he knew he was going to come back. I appreciate working with all the members of council who are here and with the members of the city. It's been a good thirty years. We've had ups and downs, but I think everyone has made good faith efforts to try and deal with each other in a fair and impartial fashion, and I've appreciated that over the years. I thank everyone for the recognition tonight. Thank you very much.
We have none? Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of council, Mr. Mayor, members of the administration. Tonight, the subject--
Name and address first, sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, Mark Williams. I'm a resident, longtime resident and business owner in Ward One. The reason for my approaching council this evening is just to recognize two outgoing officials that we have here in the city, in his honor Judge Chase and Councilman Hilberg. Both have been of utmost service to the city and done what I consider to be real measurable good for our city and for Ward One specifically. And I want to thank them both for their accomplishments and thank them for their service.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, President, everyone. On behalf of Brian, I just want--
Hitters.
Oh, sorry. My name is Valerie Freeman. I've been living in Medina. I'm in Ward One. I had the opportunity to work with Brian on his many things that he has done, the must-ful for the park that he's did to program there. So Brian, it was a pleasure working with you. I hope we can do much more again.
Thanks, Val.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. President, City Council. My name is Ashley Powell. I am also a member of Ward One. I also attend Second Baptist Church, which is also in Ward One. I wanted to thank Brian Hilberg for the many things he has done for the church. Every time we look up and we have a special event, he's right there supporting. We have a nonprofit as well, such as Circle Medina and a youth branch called So Now What. He's always there, whether it's donating personally or just representing the ward well. I'm also a resident of Ward One, have been for quite a while, and you just, it's with Brian, it's not just politics. He's a good, kind-hearted person and has served his ward well, and I just wanted to make sure that I had the opportunity to express that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes.
My name's Chuck Albert, one-twenty North Cliff. I have known Brian for many, many years. Our oldest son and Brian went to school together, so afterwards, if you want to know some stories about what Brian was growing up, I have many of them. Thanks for your--
My dad's here too, he can tell you. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to address council at this time?
Yep, one more. A familiar face.
Mary Hilberg, two forty-six West Homestead. I would like to, first of all, thank Judge Chase for all of your years of service to Medina. We've been Medina residents for about fifteen years now, fourteen years, I think, exactly, but I know you've done an amazing job in your position, and you will be missed greatly. Thank you. I'd also like to thank my councilman and my husband for his years of service. It's bittersweet. I get more time with him at home, with our family now, which is an okay thing with us, but he will be missed in that seat, and we will be continuing to be around for everything that we are invited to and probably things we're not. I am proud of him. I am proud of all he has done. I am proud of who you are and who you have become. So thank you as our councilman and, more importantly, as our husband, my husband, our father, father, for everything you have done and will continue to do for the city. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other additional counsel, I mean, any other body who wishes to address council at this time? Okay, I'd like to call Michael Ross up to the front. Welcome. We're going to adopt a resolution here. Michael's going to be, earn the rank of Eagle Scout. So Resolution number one seventy-six seventeen, a resolution congratulating Michael Ross on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Michael Ross is currently a member of the Boy Scout Troop Number Five fourteen, Great Trail Council, and whereas, as a result of considerable hard work in the areas of citizenship, physical fitness, character, and leadership development, Michael Ross received the Eagle Scout Award, the highest award attainable in scouting. And now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Medina, Ohio, that the Medina City Council hereby commends Michael Ross for his outstanding contribution to his community and Boy Scout Troop Five fourteen in obtaining the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. That a signed copy of this resolution shall be presented to Michael Ross in recognition of his hard work and dedication of obtaining this award. That this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Shields?
Move to approve Resolution one seventy-six seventeen.
Second. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Resolution one seventy-six dash seventeen passes seven zero.
Congratulations. One quick question we have. What was your-- What was your Eagle Scout project?
I built a garden bed for the Medina Weekday Preschool, which is attached to the Methodist Church on Foot Road.
That's great. Thank you.
So I'm not going to read the entire proclamation. I'd like to present this to Michael and thank you for all your efforts with scouting and for building the garden there. Michael and I go to church together at the Methodist Church, and I see him there pretty regular and serve him communion, and you're an outstanding young man, and congratulations on your Eagle Scout. God bless you.
Ordinance Number 17717, in order to make appropriation for current expenses and expenditures of the City of Medina, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I referred to this in my remarks earlier. As you well know, we didn't cook this up this week. It's been a long process coming, but we did have amendments to it coming, it seems, up to this week, but here you go.
Yes, I appreciate it. I appreciate the hard work of the department heads, the mayor, and the rest of the city council. We do do a budget process. We do something differently than most communities. We do a five-year budget plan in which we look way in the future of where we're going to be and dictate or kind of give a guide, I guess not dictate. Maybe you guys think we dictate it, but maybe we don't, of where the money's going to come from and how it's going to be spent. And I can say that through this process, we still look relatively in well shape for the next five years. Hopefully, we'll make it through the five years with different things coming off of bonds that we have and other activities we're doing for economic development that we can continue to fund the city's services at the high level that we do without an income tax increase. And I think that's very important for the community, and I want to congratulate everybody on council and administration for making that a reality. Is there anybody else that has any comments?
It's been fun.
It's always fun. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 177-17 passes 7-0.
Resolution 17817, a resolution adopting a five-year budget for the City of Medina, Ohio for the period beginning January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham, anything to add?
Yes, Mr. President. This is the five-year plan. The last item was the budget, which all governments in Ohio are required to do. Of course, the five-year plan is something we're not required to do. We do that to make sure we are planning ahead, and this is the 2018 to 2022 five-year plan, and I think it's about the middle of next week we start on the 2019 to 2023 plan.
You can never start too early. Is there any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Resolution 178-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 17917, in order to authorize the purchase of three 2018 Ford K8A all-wheel-drive police interceptors and one 2017 Ford Fusion from Lebanon Ford for the Police Department and Detective Bureau.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested and moved out at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Chief Kinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're requesting the purchase of three Ford Explorers for frontline vehicles and one Ford Fusion as a detective bureau vehicle. We haven't purchased vehicles since 2015. Our intent here is to get these vehicles up and running so that we can maintain a proper rotation and maintenance schedule of the vehicles.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 179-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 18017, in order to authorize the expenditure not to exceed $30,000 to Hall Public Safety Co. for the upfitting of three police interceptors for the Police Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Chief Kinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for a vendor who outfits the vehicles. This is for the three Ford Explorers.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of ordinance.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 180-17 passes 7-0.
Resolution 18117, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the Medina County Commissioners at the Medina County Public Defender's Commission to provide legal services for indigent persons charged with the violation of the city ordinances.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested and moved out at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mr. Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President. The state laws require that the municipality enter into a contract with the local public defender for defense of indigent persons. This contract is identical to the contracts we've passed in the many years prior to this contract. The emergency clause is requested as the contract needs to take effect by January 1.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 182-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 18317, in order to authorize the expenditure not to exceed $66,500 to Epic Aviation LSE for the purchase of Jet A fuel at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, as it says, is to cover the purchase of Jet A fuel. It's for 2018's fuel. We need to pass it now so that we can buy fuel in January if necessary. The amount is an estimate of what we will spend on Jet A. If the price goes up or we sell more, we will have to ask for more money later.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordnance 182-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 18317, in order to authorize the expenditure not to exceed $66,500 to Epic Aviation LSE for the purchase of Jet A fuel at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, as it says, is to cover the purchase of Jet A fuel. It's for 2018's fuel. We need to pass it now so that we can buy fuel in January if necessary. The amount is an estimate of what we will spend on Jet A. If the price goes up or we sell more, we will have to ask for more money later.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordnance 183-17 passes 7-0.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. The city received a federal grant for the Champion Creek project. As part of all the federal grants, we're required to do an environmental analysis, and that analysis has to be done by an ODOT pre-qualified consultant. EMHT, H&amp;T is pre-qualified, and we're recommending them for this work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of ordinance.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordnance 185-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 18617, in order to authorize the mayor to enter into modification number one of the engineering services agreement with DLZ Ohio, Inc. for engineering and design services for the South Elmwood Bridge Replacement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. This bridge replacement on South Elmwood is also a grant project for us, and we are asking, due to comments received during the design process, to increase the scope of services for DLZ so we can get the project completed and out to bed here early this spring.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of ordinance.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Ordnance 186-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 18717, in order to amend ordinance number 16716, passed December 12, 2016, amendments to the 2017 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, as you can see, is a rather extensive list of appropriation adjustments. This is year end. We have to cover all of our expenditures.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, as you can see, is a rather extensive list of appropriation adjustments. This is year end. We have to cover all of our expenditures.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields. Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordnance 187-17 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 188-17, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Medical Mutual of Ohio for dental and life insurance benefits for the employees of the city of Medina.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Shields.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. So council, at your last meeting, passed the health insurance with Medical Mutual. Just as a recap, in 2017, we had the same healthcare cost, no increase in premiums as we did in 2016. This year, Medical Mutual offered us a 7%, greater than 7% reduction in the health insurance benefits. We then had to negotiate the dental and life insurance benefits, and the dental remained flat. So that's two years in a row for that, and the life insurance actually decreased. The emergency clause is requested because the new cards have to be made up, and the benefit packets provided to the employees before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments or discussion? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the emergency clause.
Shields. Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields. Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordnance 188-17 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 189-17, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Advances, as you know, are a loan from one fund to another. For those watching at home, we essentially loan money from our left pocket to our right pocket. Most of these deal with grant projects. We have to loan ourselves the money because we have to spend it before the granting agencies will reimburse us, and then we can repay the loan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields. Ordnance 189-17 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 190-17, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a master services agreement with the Medina Port Authority for fiber transport services.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Shields.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city was in a contract with the commissioners, Medina County Commissioners, and the fiber providing services to us, and we were paying $873 a month for a five-year contract. We renegotiated that contract at the end of that five years, and were able to secure a contract for $500 a month, so saving $373 a month for a three-year contract. So this is an agreement to not exceed three years or $18,000. And the reason for the emergency clause is we need it to be effective January 1st of 2018 because so many of our data backups and records management services are all dependent on having the fiber services. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the emergency clause.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields. Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields. Simpson.
Yes.
Ordnance 190-17 passes 7-0.
All right, the last ordinance of the year. Here we go. Ordnance 191-17, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund advances.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
This is similar to the earlier ordinance on advances. Again, we are loaning money to ourselves to cover projects.
Thank you. Any discussion on the last ordinance of the year? Clerk, please call the role on the last ordinance of the year.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields. Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Ordnance 191-17 passes 7-0.
Okay, council comments. I'm gonna start them out. I just have a couple things. First, I want to thank Brian for all his years of service. Many people don't know, but Brian and I graduated high school together from Buckeye High School a long time ago, it feels like. But I think he had the calling, as I did, to get involved in public service and try to help any way we can to better the community and make life a little bit better for those who do not want to serve in the public service capacity. Because again, you're always in the public, and people are always looking at you, and sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. But overall, every once in a while, we can be involved in something good happening, and I think that makes it all worthwhile for everybody on council, including Brian. So Brian, I appreciate all the effort you gave to the city of Medina, and I hope you don't stop giving that effort. There's many things you can get involved. And I hope you continue to be involved in those activities because public service is a rewarding aspect of life, and I think you enjoy it. We just have a little bit of appreciation to give you if we could pass it down. We know we don't want to go in front, but there's a little bit of a...
Thank you, John.
There's nothing bad. There's just a little plaque that we prepared for Brian. And I don't even think I can open it here, but let's try this out. I guess I can read it through. It just says, "Presented to Brian Hilberg, Ward 1 Councilman from March 28, 2012." He was appointed. "To December 31, 2017, in recognition of your outstanding and dedicated services rendered to the city of Medina and the community. This is on behalf of the Medina City Council for 2017." And we didn't go out front because he didn't really want to go out front.
Thank you.
Thanks again. And the last council comment that I have is I want to wish everybody a happy and safe holidays and a Merry Christmas to everyone. This is another year that we've made it, and we look forward to 2018. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Four things, but I'm gonna be really quick. CDC, congratulations. I mean, you and the people that came before you has transferred our square into the masterpiece that it is. And I'm sure your efforts will continue, and it will, as you're spreading out through the neighborhoods, it will only get better and better. Mr. Ross, I want to thank you for your efforts, your dedication, and the work that I'm sure you will continue to do, not only for your family, your church, but for your community. Congratulations. Judge Chase, I've had the pleasure, sir, of working with you for 14 of your 30 years. There's a couple things that stick in my mind that I want to comment on. Back in 2004, '03, '04, '05, '06, the city was really having... We were starting to catch up on some of our financial deficiencies because our community passed an income tax increase. But we went through a period where we had to lay off employees. We had to cut programs. And when we went through the budget process for several years, you held your budget at the line that it was at. There was no increases. And your compassion that you spoke of for the love of your community, it stuck with me. There's been several times over the years when Council President Coyne and the council members have asked all department heads to try to keep their budgets at the same level that it was for the previous year. And again, sir, you honored that. And I know that wasn't an easy task, and you didn't have to do that, so I appreciate that. I know through the court special projects issues, we didn't always see eye to eye at council and administration and your department, but you were cordial through the entire process. I respected every comment that you made about the process, and I think we all learned what needs to be done over there. And hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to accomplish some of those things that's needed at the court across the street there. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hilberg, last but not least. First of all, I want to thank you for the service that you've given to the city. I know that's not going to stop. I want to congratulate you on a well-run campaign. I know Laura's in attendance tonight, and she will fill your seat and do a good job. But I just want to thank you for the campaign that you ran. I know you may not think so, but you've got a lot of people in this community, a lot of people in this city that respect you and think the world of you. Mary, I know we're gonna be seeing a lot of you and your girls. I mean, you've all become special to all of us. But Brian, good luck to you, and we'll see you soon.
Thanks, Tony.
Mr. Shields.
I just want to start too with a few congratulations, obviously. Michael, congratulations on your Eagle Scout Award. Want to thank the CDC. So many of the things that make Medina great, the catalyst for that is the CDC. Wish you another wonderful 50 years doing great things in Medina, making it a special place. You've left quite a legacy so far with the first 50 years.
Speaking of legacies, Judge, you know, how special. You grow up here in Medina, become a leader with the school board, as a judge. You make a real difference in your community, and I just think that's very special. You're truly a role model, and I really admire everything you've done and everything you've done for this community. So thank you very much for that. I look forward to seeing you every morning at Panera still, our usual meeting spot where we discuss usually what we talked about in a budget meeting or about the courthouse. So, but thank you, Judge. And then finally, Brian, I'm gonna miss you. I feel like, you know, I never knew you well before we worked on council, but I've gained a friend out of this. That's probably the most valuable thing I appreciate most about you. I will always appreciate what a great ally you were with the pool. You were from day one supportive, and there were some tough times where we weren't sure if it was going to happen, but you always kept all of us going and reminded us how important that pool was, especially to the residents of Ward 1. And that's what I always respect and admire about you, is how much you took care of the residents of Ward 1. I'll miss the Ward 1 annual picnic. That was a great time.
We're still gonna have it.
Okay. All right, that's great. Well, that was one of my favorite things every year, and I appreciate all the time and effort you put into that.
Thanks, Jim.
And I'm gonna miss the girls at the meetings. I talk about two well-behaved young ladies that definitely lightened up a lot of budget meetings and some other meetings. And thanks, Brian, for also helping us understand John Coyne better. That was one of the other things you brought to us with having known him for so long.
My greatest accomplishment on council.
But thank you, Brian. I really have enjoyed serving with you and look forward to our friendship continuing.
Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Colasar.
Thank you. I have a little list here myself. Michael, congratulations for Eagle Scout. Good things happen to people that work hard, so keep up the good work. Community Design Committee, we all love this uptown area, and you guys have done a fabulous job over the last 50 years to make this city what it is. People travel from all over this country to for our uptown area, so I greatly appreciate that. Administration, I say it every year, but thank you for another tough year, 2017. All your hard work, all department heads, mayor, all your employees, it means a lot. Each and every day out there working hard for us as residents and businesses and for council as well. So thank you very much. Dale, Judge Chase, I first came on in 2004, and one of the first things that was put in front of me on my plate was your budget. And that got me right into the swing of things, to be honest with you. And I appreciate your professionalism. You don't know this, but watched you a lot on our cable access channel, how you treated each person that came in front of you. And you gave everybody the respect they needed. You gave them the opportunity to be honest, tell their side of it, and when you made a decision, it was from the heart, from the law also. But I have much respect for you, and thank you for your 30 years of service to this community. And lastly, Brian, I've been sitting next to you for the last, what, five and a half years? Gonna miss you. You know, we're like family up here, and... Another problem I have, I get choked up, so I apologize. But you walk out of here standing tall. You've done a lot of good things for Ward 1, a lot to be proud of. And look at all the infrastructure improvements. Councilman Shields talked about the pool, how you get in with your citizens and your ward, you're a business owner here. So walk out of here proud, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you. Brian, thanks for your service. I enjoyed getting to know you, working with you. And I will tell you this, I've said this before, Brian and the pool and really the rest of the city council, the process, the deliberative process that brought the pool to fruition, the discussion that took place over quite a long period of time with a number of different ideas and objectives and costs, was probably one of the finest hours, I think, of probably this body, anybody, the way it worked out, because there was a variety of opinions and no particular specific agreement. But through that process, we came up with a great outcome that was supported by everybody involved. And Brian, you had a huge role in that, and I certainly appreciate your work. And I appreciate getting to know you as well and working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And Judge Chase, I've known you for a very, very long time. You moved into the brand-new courthouse, I think, when it was about six years old. And you don't know this, but one of the most interesting experiences I probably had in my life, 12 Angry Men is one of my favorite movies. And when I got selected to be on a jury in your courtroom years after you had started, and I got selected to be the jury foreman, everybody else was concentrating on the outcome and how to vote, and I was too. But I was also running the movie 12 Angry Men in my head. It was quite an experience. So thank you for your service. It was a long time. We had a lot of contact and a lot of discussions, and I've known you well for years. And public service, like Brian, there is nothing better than, nothing more important, I think, than contributing to a community. It's the lifeblood of how the community works, is contributing your time. And as folks on council say and other people, you know, nobody does it for the money. Well, that's the truth because of the hours and the commitment that's necessary and the time away from your family. The CDC, I didn't think about it until a few minutes ago, but the number of board members on the CDC are exactly the same number of board members that were on it when it began in 1967. And there is not a time, I don't think, ever that we have an event or I go to the square that I don't look around, and much like George Bailey in A Wonderful Life, when he decided that he really wished he hadn't lived. I thought about if the CDC had not become an organization, what would the downtown look like? And I know what it would look like because we wouldn't have the old courthouse. We might not have the square. The buildings might not be restored. We wouldn't have the streetlights. We wouldn't have the gazebo. And at one time, there was a discussion about turning the square into a parking lot. So the Community Design Committee, and particularly those original organizers and now the people that have helped to carry on with it, we as a community, because we live in a... We're blessed to live in such a magical place. And I think most of us think about it when we see it. It's just someplace that most people would probably like to live in, and we actually get to do it. So honor to you and appreciate all the work you're doing now and I'm doing and kind of helping you out. And to the administration, as always, for all your work. Appreciate that. City council. And to John Coyne, who sometimes, I think, John, you get a little overlooked in your contribution of how you direct the meetings and organize the meetings and keep things going in such a professional way that it helps encourage the kind of dialogue that we were able to have with the pool when we didn't agree. And I really appreciate what you do and look forward to continuing next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a nice list here. I'd like to, first of all, thank the CDC for the work that they've done in the past 50 years. I think the testament to the type of work they have is, I know of a 30-something-year-old engineer in aerospace defense industry, and he goes to work in Oklahoma. And on his laptop is a seasonal picture of the square, where every season he changes it. And when people look at that, they say, "What postcard did you get that from? What Christmas card did you get from?" No, no, that's my hometown. People can't believe the work that has been done by the city. And all brought on because of the impetus of the CDC. So your work is known, at least to Oklahoma anyway, probably a little bit beyond that, too. So thank you. Mr. Ross, thank you very much for your hard work and contributions to the community. And congratulations on your Eagle Scout Award. Having been a past committee chairman in Cub Scouts, has nothing to do with Boy Scouts, I know, but I know the type of work and the type of commitment and the type of person that it takes to become an Eagle Scout.